Mic test. Okay, legislature's back in session. We last left off with Senator Jimmy Espaldon's amendment to the amendment. Senator Tenorio last spoke on the amendment to the amendment when we took the recess, and now I have any other folks on the amendment to the amendment. Speaker Ben Pangolinan, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I stand in opposition to the amendment. And I understand the positions of the body in here, and it can certainly follow their position, but I hope that they can follow mine. And, you know, my position is, of course, that with regards to the obligation of this government, in my opinion, and as a policymaker in this body, and with obligations to everyone on Guam, that the money we owe the people through a court judgment for COLA, and the money we owe people that have given us the money through their income tax and trusted us that we will return it when it's due them, is an obligation of this government. And I want to make sure that when this government meet, wants to meet its obligations by going to the bond market, that we proceed with meeting those obligations, as well as the construction of the new landfill through a borrowing authority, and that we go, and that we pay for both, pay for both. And that we are structuring this financing and authorization to allow us to do that. We are making, for me, I'm making the compromise in this of removing the mandatory requirement that Section 30 be secure, the deficit financing bond. That's a huge move for me, because I realize what its effect could be, that we're seeing with regards to the taking of the additional million dollars a week out of government operations to meet the requirements of the daily operations of this government. And to me, I don't feel, I looked at the court and the decision, and read the decision, and read the U.S. Attorney's opinion on the opinion of the bond counsel. And so I go back to the original bond counsel opinion, rather than trying to look at what the U.S. Attorney's interpretation, because the judge is not citing the bond counsel, the judge is signing the Attorney General, the U.S. Attorney's opinion on the opinion of the bond counsel. And basically, on the matter of the issuance of the bonds, and that its effect of keeping that language in, of requiring both to be issued, is one, according to the letter that was submitted by Guam's bond counsel, GITA's bond counsel, to the court, was one, the debt ceiling limitation issue, that if you're going to go to market for both, for the entire amount, then you're above the debt ceiling limit. That's why there's a problem with issuing both bonds at the same time. Now, there's a proposal to raise the debt ceiling limit by tinkering and changing the assessed value of real property on Guam, which controls the debt limit. And so I have a problem with that after more careful reading, but that's not part of this consideration. So if you raise the debt limit, then you've solved one of the concerns that was noted by GITA's bond counsel on issuing the bonds at the same time. So we've solved that problem by change, by proposing this debt limit. The other problem that was cited by the bond counsel that would delay the issuance of the landfill bond is, of course, according to the bond counsel, the language that says that the, at this time in existing law, that the deficit financing bond shall be a pledge, shall have a pledge of the full faith and credit of government, and a pledge of this Section 30 revenues, period. And bond councils brought that to the attention of the court that says, that language, if we were to then, because it requires that the deficit financing bond be issued using a Section 30 pledge, just those words and a pledge of its Section 30 revenues is not sufficient legally, so that when the bonds are issued or go to market, that there is the language there to have those who are going to purchase the bonds have the language and the indenture that is going to allow these people to perfect their claim on Section 30, and we could not guarantee a Section 30 pledge just using that language. So after reading that concern, I sent the GITA bond counsel a note, and I said, "When we were considering 30-1, you had noted that this is a problem of issuing both at the same time, and if this language was not fixed, then we would have a delay in the issuance of the landfill bond. How do I fix this?" And I actually said, "Here's language that this body has used in the past to secure a Section 30 pledge. And is this language sufficient, then?" And his response to me was, "Yes. If you remove the language of the guarantee of a Section 30 pledge, and you put this new language of a Section 30 pledge that allows the bond indenture to be legally sufficient and is customarily applicable in legislation to ensure a Section 30 pledge, then there would be no delay, because there's nothing in the law that, that would prevent the bonds from being issued at the same time." That's the pro, that's the, that's the concern they had with the issued language and requiring that the bonds be issued at the same time. That's my understanding. That's my, the results of my discussion with him through correspondence, and that's why in the bill and the amendment, with the governor zeroing out Section 30 guarantee that is included of removing the mandatory pledge of Section 30, and putting in a language that permits the governor, where the governor may use Section 30 to pledge for, to pledge and guarantee on the deficit financing bond, but it doesn't require him to do so. So he can go out as a general obligation, he can go out using Section 30, he can actually, in the language of the bill now, if it passes, go out and use, and put Section 30 for both bond issues, up until the time that you hit the debt limit, and you don't violate it. And the language still is in each, in the law, in both 30-1 and in this new bill, that when you issue these bonds, nothing allows you to issue them beyond the debt limitation of the government of Guam, as controlled by Section 11 of the Organic Act. So to remove that now, to me, means that the governor can decide to only go out for one. And that's the problem I have, because I just, he has never demonstrated a willingness to pay the COLA and the income tax refunds without having to, without needing to, because it's the right thing to do, because it's an obligation of this government, both moral, legal, court-ordered, et cetera. He just doesn't want to do it. And I honestly don't understand why he doesn't want to do it, you know? Just last week, I went to another, they used to have the COLA, you know, the, the meeting of the COLA retirees, and just last week, I went to another funeral. Another one passed away. We have them every week, and now we're going to allow the governor the discretion to do one without the other, and take away the Section 30 pledge and give it to the landfill. I know, or I don't have confidence, I don't have any hope that he will do the right thing on this one, and do both if he's not required to. I just don't. I mean, that's the bottom line. Neither do the retirees, because they, they marched out there with a coffin in a protest, and he told them, "Go home." That's how these COLA retirees have tried to get the governor to listen to them, so that he can understand what they're facing. They went to a protest at the governor's office and had a coffin to demonstrate that they're dying, and these people are asking for their COLA payments so that they can go and get medical care. And did he even come out and meet with them? He said, "No, I don't even want to talk to you, much less pay you." And that's what removing or changing that language is going to allow. Give the governor the discretion to turn these people away again and put them in that coffin. That's, we kind of forget how long this has been, not the court fight, just from when we started authorizing payments, and how we, remember, remember when, when the legislature passed, I think it was back in the 27th, to pay using the bonds, to take some money out of the bonds, allowing them to unexpended balance of the tourist attraction fund bond and the highway bond? And this body authorized the governor to use that money? And then we had a hearing, and we asked the governor, "Why haven't you paid it? You've been authorized, the money's there." And they said, "There is no money. There's no money. The legislature gave us an empty, gave the retirees an empty promise." And I was in the, I came back in the legislature after taking a break. You and I took a break, at the request of the people of Guam. That's just being nice and saying we lost. But we came back, and when we came back, I started digging. And I said, "No, the legislature, I'm certain that the legislature knew what he was doing, that there was money there. No, there's no money. Did you take any money out of those accounts? No, we didn't take any money." And I think that's what sparked the under oath, because Mr. Bamba, out there in that public hearing room, in a hearing when I asked him, he said, "We never took any money," and there was no money in those accounts. And I started asking them, "Where's the money?" Nothing. So I kept digging, and I kept asking, and I asked for documents, and I kept asking for documents. They told me there was a room full of documents that I could go and search there, because no money was ever taken. And what it, it took me a while, wasn't that, but it wasn't that long, till I found the letters that the governor sent over to the bank, saying, "Take that money and, and deposit it in the general fund." And he took the money, and he didn't pay the court-ordered COLA. And he continued to deny that he ever took the money, until we found it, until I found the documents with his signature that he took the money, but he did not pay the COLA. He used the authority that this body gave him to pay COLA, to take the money out there, and didn't do it. That's how adamant, and that's how, what this governor will go through to make sure he doesn't pay these people. And if you change it from issue to market, he's just going to go over there and says, "Don't. Go ahead, put it out there, but I have to sign the final document, I'm not going to do it. I'm going to go get my dump, and then I'll just dump on the retirees and the income tax refund recipients, and I just won't do it." I can see it, because he's facing people who are in wheelchairs with walkers, with a coffin, saying, "I'm going to be in there next week if I don't get cancer treatment." And he said, "I don't even want to talk to you. I don't even want to see you." That's what has, that's the, that's the history of this thing. That's why I'm adamant on this thing, because that's the history. It's not like I can't do it because I don't have the money. He had the money, he took the money, and he didn't pay them. I can understand if the governor says, "I don't have the money." And I'll say, "I understand that, Governor, and you have to prioritize." But when he gets the authority from this body, and then he takes it, and then he just flat out denies that he took it, then we find out with his signature on it that he took the money, "At Suri Salapi Zatia Posi." And he had to be forced to return that money to those bond funds. He was forced to do it, because I told the AG, "If he took that money for that purpose and he didn't do it, what are you going to do about it?" And of course, the AG wrote to the governor, they had a settlement agreement, and he had to return that money. That's the history of the people's struggle, since they won that court case, and the order was given, and this body has given the money for him to do it. And he still won't, unless under a threat of court. And now, I want to, I, I'm going to let him have that discretion, total discretion. No, no. I will not do that. I will give him what he needs, and I'm willing to take a little bit of, of risk here, by removing the Section 30 mandatory language, making it permissive, and allowing him to use the Section 30 for the, for the, for the landfill bond, to meet this court order that he hopes, he hopes will resolve this million dollars a week. Nobody knows. Nobody knows. The judge hasn't told us. They're communicating with the judge. I wish the judge would just write us a letter. I'm going by what was pointed out as being the problem with this, and fixing it, and giving the governor some of what he needs, all of what he needs, some of what he wants, in order to move forward on this issue, and try to prevent the catastrophe that can happen with a continued thing. That we are mistaken, if we think that if we pass this bill today, we won't have to make a million dollar payment on Monday. We are mistaken. But that's why I'm opposing this change in that language, because of the history and what it will do to the chances of these people. The refund, the tax refunds, every one of us gets our call in the office. People are so desperate that they are paying somebody, or at least, we've got a court case of somebody saying, "I'll sneak it out if you pay me something else." At least that's the charge. That's how desperate people are. And these people are not desperate because they want to buy a new car. These people are desperate because they've been owed that money, they have tapped out all their other resources, now they got to go get cancer treatment. Now they got to go get an operation in Manila. That's what these people are desperate for with their money on refunds, and we're going to allow the governor to just dismiss him again. I'm not willing to do that. I'm willing to work with him, but he has never demonstrated a commitment to honoring these obligations without being forced to. When he had a chance to do it, because he was morally right, just, he won't do it. And that's why I oppose this, because I think the governor has the incentive now to issue both at the same time. And the way, if you can sell a Section 30 bond, you can sell a general obligation bond. I just believe so. Let's try it, you know? Let's do this. But I'm not willing to give him that total discretion by changing that language, that would allow him to get his dump bonds and just leave everybody else behind again, because I know he will. I know he's done so. And I know he has no problem turning these people away, because he has done that in the past. Thank you, and that's why I oppose this.
Señor Smosy, Speaker Pangolinan, are there any other speakers to Senator Jimmy Espaldon's amendment to the amendment? If not, Senator Espaldon, would you like to close? You're recognized, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I definitely appreciate the words and the sentiments, and even the historical background that was presented by the previous speaker, by Speaker Ben. And I definitely appreciate the passion with which he appreciates, which he tries to move forward in, in terms of coming up to date and meeting our obligation to the retirees and the tax refund people. However, I believe, and, and yes, it is part of the same picture in terms of what the debt is, that our government owes, not only to these, the COLA recipients and the tax refund people, but also in other areas of this government as well. In this particular case, in this particular legislation, we are talking about the dump issue, the whole landfill case, which also is a long-running saga, soap opera, that still hasn't been resolved. The fact of the matter is, that is if we, if we do not give the court, or at least the governor, a bill that would make the court comfortable, so that the court may alleviate the one million dollar a week payment, then that's also a very critical challenge that we face. Because if we continue down this road, and the court is not accepting of the bill that we are, that we are working on, then we will continue down this road of taking a million dollars every week, which then jeopardizes people's lively lives as they stand, in terms of being able, being able to take care of their needs for their families, putting food on their table, paying their mortgages, paying their, their, their obligations as well. As this section reads, the way I amended it, and if I will, I'll just read it again, "Bonds authorized pursuant to this article shall be issued if the income tax refund COLA financing bonds are also issued at the same time or earlier." Bottom line, that tells the court, if I was in the court doing the work for the judge, I would say, "Well, Judge, this just means that this is really not a viable financing alternative for the landfill, because it is contingent upon the issuance of COLA bond money, of, of, the COLA bonds, essentially, deficit reduction bonds, right? If there is no takers, if there is no issue, if there is no interest in these COLA bonds, right, then there is no way that we would ever be able to pay for the landfill." So they're linked. And the issue now is, how do we delink them, so that we can stop this one million dollar a week coming out of the coffers, so we can continue on the government operations as they are now? Otherwise, we all stand to lose, our people stand to lose some hours, some monies in their jobs, as they are now. Again, is this, the question becomes, is this with, is this bill, if we pass it with this section in, that the financing for the landfill will be contingent upon a bond being issued for the COLA payments, is that a viable financing option to go forward, to close the dump and open the landfill in the timeframe that we're looking at? If I was clerking for the judge, I would say, "Your Honor, that's not the case," right? Because like I said, if the COLA bond fails, then there is no financing for the landfill. And in essence, to get to the very end of this, that just means that the million dollars a week coming out of the Guam, Gov. Guam coffers right now will continue on for the unforeseeable future, which then affects, like I said, the livelihood of men and working, men and women who are working right now, trying to provide for their families, trying to pay their mortgages, trying to pay their, their, their debts, their tuitions and anything else. And then we're definitely, definitely in a, in a worst-case situation, and that would be untenable. It seems to me that, yes, there is a linkage in terms of, we have debt all over the place, but right now, we need to satisfy, satisfy the court's requirements, so that we can get off this one million dollars a week and come into a more sensible financing plan towards the closure of this dump, as opposed to taking out of our pockets, reducing our workers' work hours or their paychecks, or laying some people off, which definitely will spawn new challenges for people on this island. And so the reason why I'm proffering this, this amendment to the amendment, is just to allow both bonds to go forward to the bond market, but they are not contingent upon each other, or at least the, the financing for the landfill is not contingent upon the issuing or the buying of, of the bonds for the COLA market. They are both allowed to go to the bond market. If the bond people like one over the other, fine. But, again, it does not necessarily mean that they are linked, or at least the finance for the landfill and the dump are no longer linked. And I think that would be palatable to the court. If they are linked, then it is the financing for the landfill, just to reiterate, is dependent upon the issuance of the bond for the COLA market. And as was noted earlier, you can't have both of those bonds floating at the same time because of the debt limitation. Now, I understand that there is a provision to raise the debt limitation in this bill. However, again, we will talk about it in later time, if and when it does come up, because I hope it does come up, but there are problems with that as well. So we need to take a look at it, and maybe take one step at a time. And I ask my colleagues to support this, so that we can take care of this issue once and for all. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator, Senator Tenorio?
Just, Madam Speaker, just requesting any senators that are on island to be in the chamber when we conduct the vote, and if there's any members.
Everybody, sir. On the Jim Espaldon amendment to the amendment, there has been a, a senator who opposed. All those are in favor of the amendment to the amendment. Roll call? Okay, with that being said, the confirmation on a roll call. Clerk, can you please read the amendment to the amendment, and then we'll call roll.
On page 29, Section 51843, line 17 and 18, replace the word "issued" with the word "marketed."
Roll call, please. Senator Rispio, one moment, ma'am clerk. Senator Rispio?
Point of order, Madam Speaker, I just ask that the following senators be excused from this voting. Speaker Wampad, Senator Ogun, Vice Speaker Cruz, Senator Titegui, and Senator Calvo.
Um, there's no objections to that on the motion. Motion carries. Thank you, Senator Rispio. Madam Clerk, you can proceed.
Senator Ada? Senator Ogun? Senator Blas? Senator Calvo? Senator Cruz? Senator Espaldon? Senator Guthertz? Acting Speaker Munya Barnes?
Aye.
Senator Palacios? Speaker Pangolinan? Senator Rector? Senator Rispio? Senator Titegui? Senator Tenorio? Speaker Wampad?
Yeah. We have three ayes, seven nays, five excuse absent on the amendment to the amendment. We have three ayes, seven nays, five excuse-absent on the amendment to the amendment. Motion fails. We are now back on Speaker Ben Panglinen's main amendment. Do I have any other colleagues who wish to speak? Senator Panglinen, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, as I mentioned, the amendments that I presented incorporated things that the governor wanted, that are reflected in the original bill, and what he wanted to take out, and that's why the amendment really is wrong. Not everything in this is new language at all. It is formatted to show what was the changes and what is being done. I have a real big problem with the, one of the amendments, which I, again, as I continue to read the bill, see some issues here that we have questions on, that, you know, are just kind of hidden without any explanation, is section three on page 30 of the proposal of the amendment that I have, which restates the governor's original language, is this valuation issue as stated in 24102F as section three on page 30 of the amendment that I had passed out. And the problem I have with this is, upon closer reading, it looks like it's pretty innocuous, that we're trying to raise the debt limit to go from 70% to 90%, and I guess it's to accommodate, of course, all the bonds and the issue and the authorizations. The problem with this, of course, is that if you do this, then, and what the effect it has, in my opinion, and my reading and little bit of research, is that this is going to raise property taxes by 20%. That's the effect that this would have with regards to adopting this amendment. And so, in my presentation to the body that this is something the governor wants, after reading from it, I have a problem with it. But I also want to make sure that I'm correct in my interpretation, and I have sent Rev Tax a letter as of this morning, asking them to give me what the effect of this would have on the debt ceiling and the property tax that the people of Guam will have to pay. Because I believe that it will, the effect is, it will raise property taxes by 20%. And I'm waiting for that amendment, or for that correspondence from the Director of Revenue and Tax, that I've asked him to do so, because if, in fact, this is what the governor wants, if this is his intention, then I think it's a sneaky way of putting it in here, that he's not telling us that that's the effect that this would have, and that we're now going to be asked to raise taxes on property by 20% without any kind of hearing, without consulting the people, and so forth, or, you know, according to what we want to do in being open and transparent. This is not open and transparent. Doing it in this manner, and not telling us that that's the effect it would have, and hoping that nobody catches it, maybe, or what's even a scarier thought, is that he just didn't know. That, to me, is even more scary. What else is in here that's going to have something different than what's on its face, and we don't know about? So I would like to, before acting on this section, at least, understand its effect on property, on the valuation and the debt ceiling limit, and the tax rate and the taxes that the people of Guam will have to pay. And so, I'm going to request for, you know, I'm going to request for a brief recess while I try to follow up again with Rev Tax on the status of my request on the effect that this would have. Now, the media, I had asked, you know, Rev Tax, and the media knew about it, because I said, "This is something that's happening that I'm not sure about," and my understanding is, the governor's standing by this, that if that's what it does, then that's what it does, and you guys do what you want. You know, and that's not what my intention is. My intention is to find out, so that everybody understands what we're trying to do. And so I'm requesting a brief recess while I follow up with my office to find out exactly the status of that request.
Thank you very much, Speaker Panglinen. Before I work on the, I'm going to go ahead and recognize Senator Frank Blas. Do you have a point of information?
Yeah, well, point of, no argument from, I agree with the previous speaker. I believe that that kind of information is necessary for us to be able to fully understand what this process is. I appreciate, yesterday, Speaker Panglinen and I had a conversation yesterday, and I think I brought that matter to his attention too, yesterday. But that being said, you know, and I will proffer, I can proffer an amendment, but that will be contingent upon the kind of information that's brought--
Thank you. Thank you, Senator. Thank you, brother. What I'll do is, based on the information that was just received, we're going to go ahead and take a brief recess, and then we'll come back, and I'll have a further determination.
This legislature is back in session. Senator Ben Pangolinan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, my office did receive a response from the Director of Revenue and Taxation, and I'd like to submit it to the clerk and perhaps also have the clerk read this into the record, and I'll make copies available. I also would...
Senator Pangolinan, based on that...
But I'd like to first read my letter to the Department of Revenue and Taxation.
Yes, I was gonna, in all fairness to everybody here, if you can go ahead and read your letter to the Department of Revenue and Taxation, and then submit that, and then I will also ask you, Speaker Pangolinan, to please give the response from the Department of Revenue and Taxation to the clerk, and I will go ahead and have the clerk read it for the record.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. As I was speaking, Madam Speaker, before we took the recess, I was concerned about this provision after reading it overnight and continued to read and study the bill to actually see what's in there, because, you know, there were so many things in reviewing it that was in the transition from amending to reenacting and then not reenacting, et cetera, et cetera. The confusion really was, you know, presentation was quite artful, I would want to say, and so therefore I continued to study the bill. So I wrote a letter on that provision because of my concern, and it was addressed to Mr. Art Loggins, the Director of the Department of Revenue and Taxation. And, you know, the letter basically reads, you know, "Dear Mr. Loggins Huffaday, the Governor has proposed the following language, which proposes to raise the assessed valuation on property from seventy to ninety percent in Bill 1-S, under consideration at this time by the legislature." The language reads, basically, Section 7 of the bill, subsection 2401-02, 24102-F, of Article 1, Chapter 24, Division 2 of Title 11, Guam Code Annotated, is hereby amended to read as follows. 2124102-F, value, full cash value, fair market value, and cash value mean ninety percent of the appraised value. Appraised value means the amount at which the property would be taken in payment of a just debt from a solvent debtor as determined by the last completed valuation conducted pursuant to Title 11 GCA, subsection 24306, as amended by the annual adjustments mandated in this chapter. And that was the language, of course, proposed by the Governor. And I continue in my letter, "I'm requesting the following information in writing from the Department before 2:00 p.m. today, at which time we will continue discussion on the bill. One, what will be the effect on the debt ceiling, on the debt limitation of the government of Guam pursuant to Section 11 of the Organic Act? Will it increase, decrease, or no effect? Two, what is the current debt limit, and what will the change in the debt limit should this provision pass? Three, what is the effect of the passage of this provision on the real estate tax on property owners? Will it increase, decrease, or no change? Please provide an illustrative example." Again, this information is required by the legislature before it acts on this provision and request the information before the legislature reconvenes at 2:00 p.m. this afternoon, and then the court has the response.
At this time, we will have the clerk read the letter from, the response from the Department of Revenue and Taxation. Clerk, please proceed.
Memorandum dated March 26, 2009, to Senator Vicente Pangolinan from Acting Director. Subject language: In Bill 1-S proposing to raise the assessed valuation on property from seventy percent to ninety percent. Due to the time constraints per your request, I am giving a general response to your three questions concerning the above matter. The change from seventy percent to ninety percent of the appraised value of property would increase property taxes if the assessed tax rates are not adjusted or reduced accordingly to remain revenue neutral. This change would also effectively increase the debt ceiling, as mentioned in your letter and Bill 1-S. Paragraph. Note that our Department, DRT, has been, has not been directed by the Governor, nor have we attempted to effectuate a hidden increase in real estate taxes via Bill 1-S. DRT has also been transparent in working the Guam legislature concerning any proposed legislation and will continue to do so. Any changes or concerns you may have with Bill 1-S should be addressed to the Governor's Chief of Staff or Legal Counsel. Chief of Staff or Legal Counsel. Paul J. Paplo.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. As you can see, Madam Speaker, the information that we requested, we're not able to get any specific information at this time, and, you know, this, but it does make one thing perfectly clear, is that it will raise property taxes. And I'm just not prepared, Madam Speaker, to act on a property tax increase in a bill that we didn't even have a public hearing on, because it was a special session that was called by the Governor, and we have to convene pursuant to his call. You know, if the Governor had submitted this bill in regular fashion for address at his request, then we could have had a public hearing. Then we could have looked at these issues, and we could have had the administration come and explain exactly what the provisions of the bill are, the provisions of the bill contain, and we can be very clear on what those are. But, Madam Speaker, as we've seen what happens in the bill, as we looked at it, there are so many things here that are hidden, and I don't know if they're intentional or not. And again, I want to say, I don't know which is a more scary thought, that they're trying to sneak something by, or they just don't know what they're doing, you know? And so, this, this amendment to me, that the Governor's proposing, just can't fly. I'm not going to act on a bill or include a provision in this bill that would allow us to raise the taxes without consulting the people, even allow us to adjust the rates and so forth, at this time with not knowing what the effect is gonna be. You know, we may say, just do what you think is going to be, but we don't have the benefit of the input. And we could, we could say, oh, we could bring him in here, but again, it's the manner in which this bill was sent down here in a special session that we have to address, and then we find it did so many things that changed the policy of this, of our island government, basically. And we saw the things. We, many of my colleagues spoke about what has been put in this bill that were not included in the last one, the one I like, that keep the change provision, that if there's extra money, DPW, here, have at it, and you don't have to tell anybody what you're gonna do with it. You know, the takeout, we can privatize, we can contract, nobody has to know anything about it. No economic analysis needs to happen. The issue of, we're gonna go out with a sale of the landfill bond, and we're gonna leave everybody else behind on the refunds and the COLA. Again, not apparent and not transparent in what the effect of the bill as presented by the Governor has. The sale of the assets and the leaseback provisions that's in here that allows, you know, a sale of JFK and Goma Tranquilidad. You know, I mean, again, just thrown in here with no discussion, the Governor isn't even telling us these are the changes he's making from the last bill. And maybe he doesn't have to, and we just need to be more diligent when we get something from him and do our homework very, very carefully to understand and know exactly what he's trying to do. You know, but sell JFK, sell Goma Tranquilidad, you know, they're gonna lease Goma Tranquilidad for a dollar a year. Seven acres of beachfront property, they're gonna lease for a dollar a year to a developer. That's what's happening. Those are the kind of things that are happening without involvement by this legislative body. So this, and then, of course, this issue, once more, we find ourselves that this proposal, while on its face, does what it says it's going to do, which is increase the valuations, and the effect is it'll increase the debt limit. That was our understanding, and then we find out that not only does it do that, it increases the taxes the people of Guam have to pay. So I'm just not willing to live with this, Madam Speaker, without consulting for the public, and that I'm going to move, Madam Speaker, that we delete Section, basically, amend the amendment I had, which restated the Governor's position in there, and it's located on...
Page 29?
Page 30, or 30?
30.
And it's under Section 3, and I'm gonna move to delete Section 3. And that if the Governor wants to raise the debt limit and tie it to a tax increase, then he needs to send that down in here and say that's exactly what he wants to do, and not try to, to allow it to go into play, into play a tax increase without consulting the people and letting them know and getting their opinion.
Thank you, Speaker Pangolinan. So your amendment to the amendment would be to delete Section 3 on page 30, from line 24 to 27, then on page 31, you would delete line 1 through line 4 after the close parentheses. Clerk, do you have that? On the amendment to the amendment, Senator Frank Blas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, put in a little precarious situation here. I agree to the amendment, and I support the amendment, but I have to caution that the action that this body took to the previous amendment and the recognition, and I'm concerned, though, what will this do to the debt ceiling? What would, it obviously would keep the debt ceiling at the current level, but how would that affect, how would this affect what we had just done with the previous amendment? And whether or not both bonds can be issued simultaneously, will that exceed the debt I think we have to be very, we have to be careful with this, because I do recall in as far, with the discussions that we had to Bill 51, that there was that concern. And as a matter of fact, in order to, it was the administration, there was the discussion in the administration that they would issue the bonds in series, so that we do not get to that ceiling. So I caution that should this amendment pass, recognizing what the body, the will of the body in the previous amendment, whether or not that's going to be a viable financing option for both bonds now, whether or not it's now, whether or not both bonds are going to be attainable. So I bring that as a point, as a discussion here, reference relative to this amendment. Again, like I said, ma'am, Madam Speaker...
The amendment to the amendment.
The amendment to the amendment. I support the amendment to the amendment. I just be, I just warn the body with regards to the ramifications that it may have as a result of the previous amendment, the previous amendment to the amendment. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Blas. Senator Tom Attah, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, I rise in support of the amendment that has been proffered by the gentleman from Baragada to remove the provision which would increase the debt ceiling because of the implications that it has, that in raising the debt ceiling, it would also raise the land taxes that our people will be affected by. And I feel that that is so significant that it really merits, and in fact, almost warrants, to have a public hearing on the issue, so that in fact, we can get the input from the general public. You know, if I recall, whenever the issue about raising taxes was ever brought up here in the legislature, there was always a big outcry, and that, and that it should have a public hearing, and everybody should have their opportunity to give an input. So what's so different with this one? Why shouldn't we have a public hearing so that the people can actually provide their input into this issue? I think the preceding speaker also raises a very valid point about the fact that if we delete this provision and do not increase the debt ceiling, that will it in fact jeopardize the feasibility of being able to go out and market both bonds, the bonds for the landfill, which comes up to about $200 million-plus dollars, $200 million, and then the bond for the tax returns and the COLA, which is about another $240 million, I believe it is. And I think we've got, the concern that was raised was that provision that's in the amendment, which requires that the COLA bonds and the tax refund bonds must be issued, either at the same time or earlier. And I think if you take a look at just that particular provision, then it's easy to reach the conclusion that, you know, we may be knocking ourselves out of the realm of feasibility, because then we may easily actually reach the debt limit. But if you take a look and read the whole language, the whole, the entire language related to the bond issues, it does talk about the fact that these bonds can be issued in a series of bonds. So if the Governor really was sincere about making sure that we start making good faith efforts towards paying back the taxes that are owed to the people, towards addressing the COLA issues, which has been ordered by our local courts, then he could very well then issue in several series, at least to keep us within that debt ceiling, and also issue out the $200 million in the series that's necessary for the landfill. But if you take the whole, this whole issue in its entirety, we are moving in the direction that the court wants us to move, in the direction that the Governor wanted us to move. He wanted the authorization to be able to go out and issue bonds for the landfill, but bonds that are backed by Section 30 funds. We have agreed to that. So what more, what more can we do? But we are also asking to be able to continue to address the needs of competing interests that just, yesterday was very valid and legitimate, and it is no less valid and legitimate today. And I think that we need to also address those issues and move forward, keeping those interests certainly in the best interest of the people. So I support this amendment to delete the provision, and let's come back and have a public hearing. If in fact it is the Governor's intent to increase the land taxes, then let's have a public hearing on that, and let's have the people in fact give their input, if that's what they want to do, if that's what they think should be done. And so, Madam Speaker, I would urge my colleagues to support the deletion of this particular provision as an amendment to the amendment. Thank you.
Cito, Smancy, Senator Attah. Are there anybody else willing to speak on the amendment to the amendment? Senator Matt Rector, you're recognized.
Thank you so much, Madam Speaker. Yeah, you know, once again, we talked about this yesterday, as to why we put forth this original amendment, and the good maker of the original amendment issued it, because there were so many hidden pitfalls in the original bill that was sent down to us, and this is another prime example of how disingenuous the original bill was when it was given to us. I mean, to propose a tax increase without going to the people of Guam is just unconscionable. And henceforth, I rise in favor of the amendment to the amendment, because this is a serious issue. This is the type of thing that needs public input. Now, I'm not opposed to raising taxes, and yes, I'll say it, but you know what? We have to do it smart, we have to do it in a way that the people that cannot afford to pay an increase don't get an increase. And like Senator Obama, he's now President Obama, I forgot, it's a new day in America, and like President Obama's doing with the National Tax Plan, he's raising the taxes on the upper five percent of the population. Now, that's not gonna affect 95% of the people on Guam, so I think that's something that maybe we could live with, right? But once again, it needs a public hearing. The people need to come out and speak on anything as complicated as raising taxes, especially something as complicated as property tax. So therefore, I rise in favor of the amendment. Thank you.
Okay. On the amendment to the amendment, thank you, Senator Rector. Senator Judy Guthrie, you're recognized.
When we first received the Governor's bill, I think like the rest of my colleagues here, I started to go through it, line by line, word for word, and like many of my colleagues here, I discovered some things in it that were not in the original Bill 51, now Public Law 30-1. And I began asking myself, why would the Governor put things in this bill that really are extraneous to the title of the bill and the purpose of the bill, which was to utilize Section 30 money to guarantee a bond float for the proposed new landfill in Dandang? And as I continued to read the bill and discover more questions with few answers, sort of came together. And by this afternoon, after our good colleague confirmed the potential of this bill providing for a real property tax increase, then I recognized that there is some other agenda involved in this bill. It was not as straightforward as it was purported to be, and that, in fact, the administration was intending on identifying additional revenues and the flexibility of using those additional revenues for purposes other than the landfill project. This includes leftover monies that could be used at the discretion of the Director of the Department of Public Works. This includes the authority to sell government assets and to entertain leases of government assets, and it includes a tax increase for real property. I hope the people of Guam out there understand this, that this bill does more than just ask for Section 30 authorization to pay for or guarantee the bonds for this landfill. It includes a lot of other things. And that is why we are entertaining an amendment offered by Senator Pangolinan, and an amendment to his amendment that he also just prospered, in order to ensure that our people are not burdened with a tax increase without a public hearing. Personally, I would not support an increase in a real property tax at this time. People are reeling under the cost of living right now, the economy's not very good, we've seen people see difficulty in maintaining a 40-hour work week in addition to finding jobs. The tourism industry is undergoing serious difficulties at this moment, and businesses associated with the tourism industry are also impacted by the current economy we're seeing. How much more difficult does this government want to make it for the working people of this island, and the people that are just trying to put food on the table and keep their homes and their land? So I agree with the amendment to the amendment, Madam Speaker. This is no time to entertain a property tax increase, particularly without having publicly disclosed that that was in the bill. disclosed that that was in the bill. And as we have read from the letter from the Acting Director of the Department of Revenue and Taxation, they made it very clear in their letter that they certainly were not part of this proposal, and they directed the legislature to ask the governor's chief of staff about it because they were not aware of it. So how did this happen? Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sidozmasi, Senator Gauthier. Senator Rispichu, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in full support on the amendment to the amendment, and I ask all of our colleagues to really consider what the consequence will be if the amendment offered by Senator Pangolinan fails. You know, I've been away for several days. I've been on a very productive trip with Speaker Wampat, Vice Speaker Cruz, our minor leader Eddie Calvo. And we were in Washington, DC, Madam Speaker, when the news came out, when the judge ordered the $1 million weekly payments. And then subsequent to that, the governor's been on a rampage, pointing fingers at everybody and thinking that he should be absolved from the situation that we all face as an island community. And I want to not only commend the mover of this amendment for doing due diligence, I know he's been the subject of the attack himself that Governor Camacho has lodged. I want to also commend you, Senator Tina Rosemonia Barnes, in your acting capacity as Speaker. And I want to say how you handled yourself graciously and how you've been consistent in wanting to make sure that in everything that we do, we're transparent about our actions. And as the governor criticized us for not acting and saying that Bill 51, or Public Law 30-1, was deficient, which caused the judge to demand these $1 million weekly payments, you know, he signed the bill. He signed the bill, and bond counsel attested that that bill is marketable. The Attorney General, I thought, gave two excellent briefs issued on behalf of the government of Guam to the chief judge, which clearly explained and exonerated the legislature's actions. And all of a sudden, when the judge did not like what we did in Bill 51, Madam Speaker, she never talked about the marketability or the various funding aspects that we proposed in Bill 51. She never did that. She just basically said, I don't have the money, so I'm going to order these weekly payments. And to add insult to injury and to continue on this path of extorting us as elected officials to say that if they don't submit the $4 million by Monday, they'll have a $10,000 fine, then $20,000, then $40,000, then $80,000, then $160,000, and then $250,000 a day. Meanwhile, Governor Camacho, the, I'm not going to say it, but, you know, he put this government of Guam in a precarious situation by first of all violating a local law which prohibited him from setting aside the money. And he did set aside the $1 million anticipating that the judge will order him to do this, saying, I have no choice, you know, I set aside the money, but I can't pay it because this local law bars me from paying it. And as soon as the judge strikes that law down, the first thing he does is make payment. And he continues to do this. He's gone on a public campaign to even try to curry support from the Guam Chamber of Commerce to support his bill, which I don't think the chamber knows now that essentially his own bill would raise property taxes by 20%. And so I want to commend Senator Pangolinan for recognizing this. I know that everything was going so smoothly, and I want to commend those senators who took a deficient bill that was introduced by the governor and tried to make it work because that's all we try to do is make it work. Never mind the fact that the discussion of the new, or the solution to the landfill crisis has gone from whether or not La Jana is financially and environmentally the most prudent route in addressing this crisis. I think it's unfortunate that we've gone past that issue, but we're going to address this issue again when tipping fees are increased by 300% to 400%, when people reconcile in their mind that this $160 million project is going to cost $600 million at the end of the life of this loan. And we're rushing to try to satisfy a judge's order when, as the mover of the amendment pointed out, it's going to increase property taxes by 20%, just like that. You raise the valuation by 20%, so will you raise the taxes by 20%. And even if there's an amendment to correct that, I just think it's extremely disingenuous for the governor to try to do, to try to sneak the third thing in. What's next? We first discovered, and you pointed this out, Madam Speaker, that this bill, if signing the law, would authorize the governor to sell valuable assets. He's been trying to sell JFK for as long as he's been in office. He's been after the Guama Tranquilidad property for as long as he's been in office. And he's trying to raise taxes every opportunity he gets without doing this methodically. And so, you know, if we had just received his bill and passed it immediately, we already see what those ramifications are with acting quickly without the benefit of a public hearing. But, you know, you waived the public hearing requirement because it was an emergency. There was no need to drag this out in the committee of the whole because we've already been down this road. But as we assess what these different sections would do, our only tool is to clarify from the departments and agencies in which Senator from Baragada, Speaker Pangolinan, did that. And if you see the revenue taxes response, they said, oh, no, no, we didn't want to raise taxes just like that. And they just basically disavowed the governor's actions in this sense and said any references regarding Bill 1 parentheses 1-s shall be referred to the chief of staff or to his legal counsel. I mean, is that, is that what we're doing? If as soon as something the administration is doing that's gone foul, all of a sudden it's somebody else? But, but the governor, if there's any good that's going to come out of this, it's because he wanted it? And just to be clear and to set the record straight, regardless of what we do, is not going to prevent that $1 million weekly payment. The judge did not allude to that at all in her order. I mean, until you give cold, hard cash to the US Chief District Court, then will she stop these $1 million weekly payments? So that's two issues for me that I'm having trouble reconciling this in my mind, is that, you know, the expenses of La Jana and the consequences thereof, and also the billings that the receiver has been submitting, which the chief judge has just been signing off. And that's another issue that we're going to have to address and how we fit into this whole federal territorial relationship with the United States government. And as we are held in contempt and try to find a resolution to stop these $1 million payments, the chief judge must also recognize that Guam is going to go through this period of humongous massive military buildup, and that if the federal government just get their act together, and that's what I told General Byss and Under Secretary of the Navy, Wayne Arnie, if you guys just communicate to the United States Environmental Protection Agency that it's possible for the government of Guam, for the Navy or the military, rather to be a customer of the new landfill, and that the talk of advancing the tipping fees maybe 20, 25 years, we could automatically see the cost to construct this landfill reduce significantly, so the overall financing cost for this project will be correspondingly reduced. All they have to do is sign an MOU, and we can securitize that and show the chief judge that this is a viable financing option. But instead, we're trying to go down this road and to even in the backs of our people, on top of raising the tipping fees 300% to 400%, if not more, selling off valuable assets that this government of Guam, that the people of Guam own, and now raising property taxes without the benefit of a public hearing. The law also says that a referendum is required for any of these actions. And so, you know, I stand in full support of this amendment. I know it seems like there's been a partisan divide as to whether or not we're going to support the governor's bill or support an amendment to the bill. But I think this is one instance where I think we need to set the partisan politics aside and recognize that passing this bill without, with the amendment as is, essentially would raise taxes without the benefit of public input. Or even without going back, do what we always do, call up our friends in the chamber and say, hey, this thing you're asking us to vote for, did you know that the governor's essentially trying to raise taxes by 20%? I don't think they would appreciate how they were misled by our chief executive at that luncheon yesterday. I think this process has already vetted this bill so that we already see all the things that need to be changed. And this amendment to the amendment is one of those instances where regardless of you're Republican or Democrat, regardless of you agree with the governor or not, I think we should all come to the same conclusion that keeping this section in without the benefit of hearing from all those that would be affected would just add insult to injury. And so I rise in full support of the amendment.
Sidozmasi, Majority Leader. At this time, do I have any of my colleagues who still wish to speak on the amendment to the amendment? Senator Jimmy Espaldon, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I don't think anybody here would oppose this amendment at this point in time. I think we all recognize the importance of the public input on such matters such as increasing taxes. However, again, I just want to go back to the amendment that was made previously. And the only reason why I want to go back, because if we refer to the court order, right, there are two issues that she cited out, or actually, again, she basically quoted the United States position when they pointed out that the Bank of America and Guam's, and the government's bond consultant, both stated that Public Law 31-1 created two uncertainties for the issuance of financing for the consent decree projects. One of the uncertainties was that legislation provided that deficit financing bonds must be issued at the same time or before the landfill system bonds. Well, we kept that provision in, so that uncertainty is still in this bill. Now, the second uncertainty, as the court noted, was that the legislature did not increase the debt ceiling. Again, we know the consequences and ramifications now if we allow the debt ceiling to be raised according to way it's written in this particular bill. But the point here is that, yes, I would definitely be in favor of striking this section out. However, after we have all made that decision, and it seems to be unanimous that we're not going to go with this, now we're stuck in the same situation where Public Law 30-1 was, and which was offensive to the court and was noted to have two uncertainties. Those two uncertainties still remain in this bill. And so the issue before us now is, okay, we delete this section, and I believe everybody would probably be for it, where do we go from here? And that was the importance of addressing the amendment that I made previously, to make sure that at least there is no uncertainty at that level, that both bonds could proceed to the market and let one perhaps, you know, get issued without being dependent upon the other. But I do rise in support of this amendment to the amendment, Madam Speaker. But again, I caution us that we are in the same position we are with the concerns that the court noted in 30-1. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sidozmasi, Senator Espaldon. Senator Tino, you're recognized on the amendment to the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Been following the discussion and curious, along the same lines as the immediately passed member just spoke, we have a dilemma where we don't want to impose higher taxes on our people, but yet we have the inability to be able to get the money to be able to finance the landfill and the closure of the order dump. So where lies the remedy? We're kind of in the same situation that we started with. If you can't get the money because the debt ceiling is going to be reached before you get the full 202 million or whatever number of dollars that we need to do that, then it's not a viable financing package. If it's not a viable financing package, then we're going to have a million dollars taken out of the coffers again on Monday. And then the governor has already indicated that we're going to have to go down the road of looking at furloughs and layoffs. And then further, as I said yesterday, Standard and Poor's and the other financial institutions are looking at us right now that's saying the liquidity of our government is coming into question, which means that the grave of Guam in getting bonds is going to be compromised. Then all the COLA and EITC and all the other laudable things that we need to go get bonds for then suddenly become even less attractive to an already unsure financial sector globally and nationally. So all of that means what? We delete this section, we do not raise the debt ceiling, we do not have the capacity to borrow the money needed for the closure of the order dump and the new landfill, and are back exactly where we left off with Bill 51 reinvented as Bill 1-1s and going before the district court, which I suspect will find the same thing that they found with Bill 51. It's not viable. And if it were viable, they would have released us from the responsibility of paying the 3.9 million, but they didn't. So, Madam Speaker, I hope that as we continue down what is already to me a flawed bill, at least in this amendment, and we continue to say, yes, we're not going to raise taxes on our people, especially without a public hearing, we also are mindful of the fact that we do need to raise the debt ceiling. Is there a formula for that somewhere else? Because I'd sure like to see it. If there is a solution, which this is purported to be, to resolve the debt ceiling, then I'm open to that. You know, some of this stuff is drafted by the bond counsel, I'm told, and the bond counsel, with the advice of his capable staff, ultimately thought that this was the best approach. I'm open to revenue taxes approach, or any member of this body's approach, or any economist's approach to accomplishing the same thing. Let's raise the debt ceiling and give our government the ability to go get the money necessary for this, or not do it and suffer the same consequences which I think we already know are going to happen next week, if not next month, or whatever the legal timeline is for laying off our employees of the government of Guam, compromising government services, and for those who ultimately are responsible for that, I bid you adieu. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Tino. Senator Barnes, you're recognized.
Sidozmasi, Mr. Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak briefly on Senator Pangolinan's amendment to the amendment. And I'd like to speak in support of the amendment to the amendment, and I mean, Mr. Speaker, to rise in support. And you know, Mr. Speaker, as I listened intently to all the previous speakers, and I also was taken aback by the most recent letter that was received by the DRT, which is the Department of Revenue and Tax. It bothers me that on one hand, someone from the administration would say, you know what, don't increase taxes, we're not going to do this, we're not going to do that. But on the other hand, come and just summarily dismiss what was just said by them, and then in their own creative, how would you say, in their own creative way, just slam dunk it and put a provision that would increase taxes at the burden and at the backs of our people. You know, when this issue first came to play and there was talks about the legislature, stymieing the process, don't care, there was talks, Mr. Speaker, about the governor who was at the chamber meeting said that, you know, it was the fault of the legislature who continues to put roadblocks here. I said to myself, I don't know if the people of Guam realize, but we had spent weeks or days in reference to a previous bill that was passed and signed by this governor, which was Public Law 30-1, that didn't just give the governor one option, didn't give the governor two options, but several options to look at. And then when the the media came to me, Mr. Speaker, and asked me, asked the acting speaker, what do you, you know, what are you doing from here? I said, wait, you know what? Before I even go down this road, before we even knew we were going to have a special session, I said, what about the authorization we gave him to proceed on not just one option, not just two options, but several other options that he can look at? We talked about the private activity bond. Mr. Speaker, and I know you were at those public hearings, there were not one, not two, but I want to say more than nine interested business sector groups of people that said, hey, you know what? I can solve your problem. I can solve your problem and it will not hurt your, our people of Guam. As a matter of fact, I'm not even going to ask for your money, with the exception of, of what's, I guess, within the tipping fees. I remember Mr. Emerald going and said, I have a presentation here, Ms. Legislature, please listen to me. You want a solution? We have it. And, Mr. Speaker, I want you to know that out of that, even Getka, or Get, Gita, right, this is the new name, said, there wasn't just several, but there was nine, nine interested folks or business folks who said, we have a solution, can you give us the chance? That's what I told the media. What happened? Where are we at today with that? You know? And, and, and I keep, and I keep looking and I keep thinking, and people come up to me and said, Senator, what are you going to do if you let this court force it upon the people of Guam to build a new landfill in Inarahan that will destroy the most vital thing that our people live by, that every human being lives by? And that's what God has given us, that fresh water resource. You know, we don't talk about it today, but you know what, Mr. Speaker, I've been here, I was here on the 27th Guam Legislature, and I think that was in 2002, we're here in 2009. And you know what? When they first, Ledson wasn't even talked about. It was, there were so many other options, and all of a sudden, by a whim of a stroke of a pen, Inarahan came to play. And I'm like, and you know what? For the people who are listening today, if anyone can imagine over 7 million gallons of water can be ascertained down in Ledson right now. And you know what I said in my campaign? I said, you know what? If we want to use Dun Dun, or Ledson, or whatever we, we call this beautiful piece of property down in the South, let's do it for what God has given us, the gift to do, manufacture water. Use it for what it, it's so rich in. So what, what, the richness, the beauty, what we live by. That's just one perspective. Lord knows, I, I just had a conversation with legal counsel earlier on a personal note, and she said, your twin sister was so passionately talking about protecting the South. And I said, oh, she talked to you too? And she, she just said, you know what? I don't live in Malolo. I don't live in the, but I live in the South. I live in God's country. And she said, Tina, you would be doing the people an injustice if you even resign yourself to thinking. And she said, me and hundreds of others have that same sentiment. And I said, you know what? Then you got to start speaking about it. You got to start talking about protecting what you think is right for the people of Guam. I can talk, and I can advocate, but we need that help. And, Mr. Speaker, I've never, never once turned my back on wanting to close, to close order dump and revisiting what is existing in public law today. I've never had any reservations, and I tell everybody that. I may have made some premature decisions in the past because of my naivety on learning about the process, but I need you to know, Mr. Speaker, that when we talk about closing one troubled area on our beautiful island of, our beautiful tropical island of Guam, and trying to open something to ruin it and to ruin the God-given water that our Heavenly Father has provided for this beautiful island, I don't know. And you know, I, I can honestly sleep at night and say that when we worked really hard on public law that was signed by this governor, 30-1, I said, you know, I can sleep with that because we didn't just give him one option, we gave him several options. And I still want to know where we're at with that. So, Mr. Speaker, when we find out again, at this very minute, what we're up against, I have to tell you, I am not going to be able to sleep at night to know that there's a provision in there to increase our property taxes by 20%, which is an equivalent to what, 200% to, to that effect? I can't. I won't be able to sleep at night. And for the record, Mr. Speaker, I will continue to advocate to protect that precious water resource that God has given us. And I will continue to tell the people down in the South of Inarahan that we've got to look at alternatives. And I will continue to say that our community residents out there who know a little about what's going on in as far as the trash business knows that there's alternatives. And whether we're on this consent decree or not, I need you to know that we need to revisit everything. You're just like a household. When you get so strung up on, on, on bills, on tuition, on, on food, on groceries, on medical payments, and, and, and you're really tight and strapped for cash, and you have to fix the household, sometimes you just go back to the basics, reevaluate what you have before you, revisit any option that you had in the past and saying, okay, let's start from scratch again. And you know what? Maybe some options that were provided in the past that wasn't good then may be viable today. And that's what we have to look at. As policymakers, we have to be able to safeguard and protect what these, what our people have voted us in for. So, Mr. Speaker, I stand in full support of the good author's amendment to the amendment, Speaker Pangolinan's amendment to the amendment. And I ask my colleagues to really take the time to visit, revisit, and, and support this amendment to the amendment. Thank you, Sizosse Massey.
Thank you very much, Senator Barnes. Any other senator wishing to speak on the amendment to the amendment? If not, I'd ask Senator Pangolinan to close.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I certainly thank my colleagues for their deliberation on this matter. And, you know, those that present options, they're very free to present those options, you know? I mean, if they have a solution, offer the solution. I say that, you know, the governor presented this. If this is his intent, then I think he presented it in the wrong manner. There is nothing to prevent the governor from submitting a bill tomorrow, uh, the next day that says, okay, here's the debt limitation, I want to do it in this manner, in this way, I want to have it affect the tax on the people of Guam with regards to their real property in this way and in this manner. It's very simple. We can proceed with passing this bill, giving him the Section 30 requirement that he asked for, that he remains hopeful that the govern, that judge will accept, and come right back and be open and honest and transparent with the people of Guam with what he wants to do with regards to the debt ceiling and how it affects the taxes that the people will have when that is changed on the property taxes they pay. He can do that. I fully expect him to do that. So that's not a problem at all. With regards to going back to the amendment on, it's not even an amendment, it's existing law. With going back to the law that says that the two have to be issued at the same time, then we know, and this body has authorized the governor to go out and float a bond, and he didn't float the entire amount. And that's the authorization given to him here, is that he can go up to 246 million dollars on one hand, and he can go up to 202 million dollars. He can make that choice. And in the, both authorizations, it's very clear, he can do that, but he can't exceed the debt limit. And if that's the debt limit, then he goes out up to the point that he wants to bump up against that debt limit. Nothing stops him from doing that. That is why I keep saying, when you refer back to this, that he has to issue the bond, the COLA bonds at the same time, because nothing prevents him right now from going to the market. According to Mr. Dirks, that's not entirely true because the way that the language is done with regards to the issue of the Section 30 guarantee, mandatory, would not allow him to do that. So that's why we're fixing that part, so that one concern will be resolved by fixing that part, that it will not be delayed, that he can do it. And we're allowing him to do it on a permissive basis and not making it mandatory that he do so. So he can, even without raising this debt limit, go out and issue 202 million dollars worth of, of, of bonds for the landfill. He can. Or he can go out and decide that, why do we want to go out and issue 202 million dollars in bonds, put 100 million dollars in the bank, or 150 million dollars of that in the bank, pay a 8, 10, 9, 9% interest rate to the bondholders, and make 2, 3% in the bank on that? Why do we need to, to do that? He can issue it in a series of bonds, as everybody says he can, and the court has says, the bonds can be issued in any series. The receiver has said the bonds is, can be issued in a series, so that we don't end up like this. All of these things he can do, yet he won't, because he wants to make sure that he can just shove the COLA recipients and the income tax obligations aside and only deal with the landfill issue. Only deal with that. He doesn't want to deal with these people. And I'm saying that he can deal with both, and there's nothing to prevent if, if we pass this, even without this amendment at this time. And if he fully insists that he can't do it in any other way except raising the debt limit, then he can send something down tomorrow and say, this is the way I want to do it. So, once again, we continue to say, he can't do this, he can't do that? No, he won't. That, that's the operative word. Not that he cannot, he will not. And that's why, again, if he wants to raise the taxes by, in this manner, then I think he needs to be open and transparent with the people. And then we'll address that if that's the way he wants to do it. So, once again, Mr. Speaker, I think this will allow us to move forward in trying to reach the ultimate solution to this issue of finding a viable financing option, and it will be viable once this bill's passed, even without this amendment, because of the flexibility that is built into the conditions and the terms and the authorities given to him in this bill. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. On the Pangolinan amendment, there are no objections, motion carries. Um, you know, the motion carries, there are no objections. Senator Pangolinan, you still have the floor, if you, um, need additional time for more amendments, or if you'd just like to close on your main amendment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. The Speaker, you know, as we said, almost all of the issues regarding the bill and the, the amendment I'm making have been discussed in the past because it is borrowing authority. The only things we had contention with is, of course, the things that are external or extra to this borrowing authority, the things that the governor tried to put in the bill that have no relation at all to the borrowing authority of a Section 30-backed bonds. And so, we have moved, I have moved, on the manner of allowing the governor to use Section 30 to back the landfill bond. This amendment gives him that authority, which is what he's asking for. It also removes the impediment of the requirement that the deficit bond be backed by Section 30, uh, which would require that the bond would not, the landfill bond could not be issued because of the defective language in there that makes it mandatory, yet does not give it the, the necessary legal structure to do so. So, I'm working with the governor on removing that. And I'm going to include by, an issue that says that he can, he can, if he chooses to, use Section 30 to also back the landfill bond. And if the governor says, and the issue is, well, if I go with a GO and I go with a, with a Section 30 on the landfill and nobody buys a GO, well, you know what? If he really believes that he can do a, a GO, I mean, a Section 30 bond, he can do them both. He can do them both up to the point that we have the debt limitation, so that he can sell Section 30 bonds for both COLA and the landfill. And then it, it's a viable thing, because he has that option. And he can, and he can, he can decide at this time that, all right, the legislature gave me this flexibility, I'm going to make sure that it, that the financing is viable and that there's no distinction between the two issues, and I'm going to use Section 30 for both. What's wrong with that? Why doesn't he want to do that? I would, because now he has the flexibility to do so. And we know then that one's got to give. We know that if he decides to do that, we may not be able to get the entire 246 million dollars on the deficit bond. We may only be able to get 120 or 150 if he wants to go and issue the full amount at 202. But the judge didn't say, again, we go back to what the judge is saying, that you authorize the full amount. And the judge recognized, and the GBB receiver recognized, that these bonds may have to be floated in a series. And he can do that. So he doesn't have to do both up to the full amount. They both indicate, and the authorizations both give him the authority to do so. And again, I go back, if we are concerned that we've linked them now, and if we do want a GO and get no offers, then do them both as a Section 30, because he has the authority to do that. Do them both and sell them both. Offer them both and issue them both. Why won't he do that? If he truly is sincere that he wants to address the issue of the refunds that we owe our people and the COLA that we owe our people, he has that flexibility to do so. And I don't, I think those concerns become excuses. I think that he, if he says he can't do it, then it becomes an excuse. He could sign this bill tomorrow and tell the judge. And if he really wants to sit, to, to tell the judge and get this 1 million dollars off, he can sign this bill tomorrow if we pass it today in the format that it's in, and tell the judge, hafadai, judge, taidinku, buenas dan saludos. Agupa be'na, huzun esti de be'obendi i bonds. Lo tsamul liliyan, sati be'obendi, mas di ma autorizo. I won't sell more bonds than I won't sell more bonds than is authorized by the debt limit of that. And I'm going to go out and offer $200 million of Section 30 bonds for the landfill, and I'm going to do 150 Section 30 bonds for the deficit. And that is below the cap. And there you have it. It's viable because they're both Section 30, and nobody has to wait. And I'm going to go and get my full faith effort and issue both bonds. Why? If he really is sincere that he wants to get rid of that, this bill gives him that authority, and he gives him the Section 30 backing for the landfill that the judge is asking for, and he signs an affidavit unless the judge is not going to believe him. You know, maybe the judge doesn't believe him, I don't know. But he can certify to the court and the judge that he will issue these bonds and he will not violate the debt limit. And then we don't have a problem. We can go out. We can prepare all the offering documents and demonstrate good faith and move forward. And what's the judge going to say? No. If she does that, then we know she's not serious. All she wants to do is, you know, have the people do what, you know, those sweatshirts say, "She who must be obeyed." What, why wouldn't the judge, if the governor assures her that I'm going to issue both Section 30, because now they're, I'm both authorized to do so, below the debt ceiling limitation, make my good faith effort to go out there and sell these bonds? Isn't that what you wanted, Judge? Did you get a Section 30 backed landfill? It becomes viable. There's no delay. We don't violate the debt limit because that's not a concern anymore because I'm telling you, I will not? That can happen. That's the kind of flexibility we're giving the governor in this bill. And I believe it can work. The governor just has to want to do that. He has to want to do that. Because he can. Now, if he won't, then we just have to ask ourselves, "What more can we do?" If he won't, just because he doesn't get everything he wants, then he's in the wrong job. Because in politics, we all know, you can't always get what you want. But you can get what you need. And this is bill in the manner, even with the amendments, is what he needs. I'm confident of that, and he just has to make it work. He has to want to make it work because if he wants to, this can make it work. And I plead with him that even though he doesn't get everything he wants, then when he gets what he needs, he works with it and he makes it work. And that, my colleagues, is my plea to you in terms of how this bill has been, has addressed the issues that are of concern to all of us, but addresses the main issue of giving the governor Section 30 backing of the landfill bonds and allowing him to ensure that there are no other impediments if he wants to make it work. Thank you, and I hope, and ask for my colleagues' support.
Thank you. Sisus Masia, Speaker Panglinen. On Speaker Ben Panglinen's amendment, is amendment, are there any objections? If there's no objection. There is an objection. All those in favor of Speaker Ben's amendment, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. We are now, we have concluded Speaker Ben's amendment. We are now back on the main bill, which is 1-1-S. Are there any other speakers, my colleagues, for the main bill? If not, Senator Rispio, you're recognized.
To move for final.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. There being no discussion, further discussions on Bill 1-S. I move then on the motion to place Bill Number 1-1-S in the third reading file.
Are there any objections? If there's no objection, motion carries. Senator Rispio.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I also move that we vote on this bill without engrossment.
Okay, on that motion, if there's no objection, motion carries. I'm going to have the clerk.
Madam Speaker, can we just make sure that all the senators who are on island are present before we begin the vote?
Thank you very much, Majority Leader. Right now, if I, I'm just going to take a 10-second recess.
Madam Speaker, everybody here? So who's running with who now? Things change here in the country.
I'm driving a black Toyota Camry. I'm not running either.
He's running for Congress, yes, the Congress.
I'm going to tell you that he's got a lot of huge watch shows that he, you know, and they can run an ad every eight minutes for the next three years.
Who?
John Wick.
Oh, Eddie?
Still, no, John Wick.
Oh, John Wick, yeah. I believe it.
Yeah, but he said he would use it against you.
Against you?
Yeah, because I learned from him.
Oh, okay. God, I thought I was running.
Let me say, John Wick says I learned from him, but I'm not. And this is my last time, and it was nice.
Very nice.
I congratulated her.
Yes, of course.
I was the only one.
So we're standing by.
Same thing, it's like, oh, Miss X on the freeway, and reverse, boom!
Tonight, now. This legislature is back in session at this time. Senators? At this time, I'm going to have the clerk read the bill and then ask for a roll call.
I would excuse Senator. Bill Number 1, parentheses 1-S, introduced by the Committee on Rules, Natural Resources, Federal Foreign and Micronation Affairs by request of Imaga La Hinguan in accordance with the Organic Act of Guam, enacted to amend and restate Article 8 to Division 2 of Chapter 51 of Title 10 Guam Code Annotated relative to authorizing the Governor of Guam to issue Solid Waste Management System Revenue Bonds or Section 30 limited obligation bonds for the purpose of financing facilities of the Solid Waste Management System of Guam and approving the terms and conditions of the issuance of one or more series of such bonds pursuant to such article to pay the cost of a new landfill and the closure of the ordered landfill and other systems costs.
Roll call, please.
Senator Adap? Senator Ogden? Senator Blas? Senator Calvall? Senator Cruz? Senator Spalding? Senator Guthards? Acting Speaker Munia Barnes?
Hongan.
Senator Palacios? Speaker Cabrera? I mean, Ben Panglinen. I'm sorry, Senator. Senator Hector? Senator Rispio? Senator Taitugue? Senator Tenorio? Senator Wampa? One, two, three, four.
Senator Rispio? Senator Rispio?
I have the senators who are not here been excused from voting.
Okay, yes, they were. There were eight yays, three nays, four absent. Bill Number 1, 1-S, is passed. Senator Rispio?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I move that we adjourn this first special session synodically.
On that motion, without objection, motion carries. Thank you. I'd like to remind my colleagues that we have the state funeral for the late Senator Eduardo Cruz tomorrow. I'm asking that our colleagues please be here before 9:30. We will resume session, regular session tomorrow promptly at 9:30, and then we will call all the guests in for the 10 o'clock session, state funeral. Thank you. 9:30, 9:30 session will convene.